Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, November 10th, 2022 Regular Monthly Meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I thank you all for attending on tonight. I officially call this meeting to order. Now I ask now would please stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We have many very special guests with us here on this evening. I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy if he will come forward now to present two of them to you.
Good evening, everyone. We got a full house, I know we can do better than that. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah, I love that. Welcome to our November 10th Board Meeting tonight. And here to provide the Pledge of Allegiance and Student Statement with us this evening, we have two students from Victory Elementary School. As I call your name, will you please come forward? First during the pledge, we have Remy Davis. Remy, as she comes. Remy is the daughter of Briante Davis, who is in active-duty military with the United States Navy. Remy is a kindergarten student in Ms. Miller and Ms. Alumbas' class. Her favorite thing to do is to play basketball. She especially enjoys dribbling the ball. At school, her favorite subject is math, and she enjoys playing with others. Her favorite foods are hot dogs and pizza, although she will try other foods for her mom. When Remy grows up, she would like to be a firefighter, police officer, or a doctor. Next providing us with the student statement, we have Charles Shilbury. Charles is a 10-year-old 5th grade student at Victory. He's the son of Zachary and Sarah Shilbury. His father is active-duty military with the United States Navy. Charles is new to Victory this year and is an honor roll student. He likes to hang out with his family, draw, and play outside with his sister. His favorite subject is science, and when he grows up, he would like to be a scientist. Welcome, Charles and Remy. So now we will turn it over to Remy for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the tablet for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all. Please be seated.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and School Board members. My name is Charles Shilbury, and I am a student at Victory Elementary School. I'm honored to be here to share all of the exciting things going on at Victory this year and tell you why I love being a student there. Victory is a fun and friendly school. The teachers and staff there are always welcoming in the mornings, especially Ms. Davis. She is always happy to see us. Dr. Williams and Ms. Fly can be found at parent drop-off in the hallway or at the bus ramp. With so many staff members greeting us in the morning, how can we not have a great day at Victory? In class, our teachers have us do many fun activities. For example, in science, we do labs or hands-on activities every week, and Ms. Webb makes us plan the labs ourselves. She says we learn a bit better this way. In social studies, we made 3D maps of the United States of Salto and then painted the geographic regions on them. In math, we use Skittles to find mean, median, mode, and range. Ms. Merrill also says we will be making 3D cities when we learn volume, area, and perimeter. In reading, we have done task cards and parts of speech, and we've done vocabulary, which we love. We also have some fun clubs at Victory: Chrome Club, Odyssey of the Mind, Coding Club, and Recycling Club. I'm excited to be part of the Chrome Club. Our school also has a large military student population, and we have been identified as a Purple Star School. Last month, we hosted a techno night where families were able to come and experience the various technology resources we have available. These are some of the many reasons that Victory is the place to be. We invite you to come by and visit our wonderful school anytime. And there's one thing I'd like to mention real quick: Please bring your own lunch.
So what we'll do then, Dr. Williams, is Ms. Atkinson has some presentations. And before you go, I did mention the parents, but if I can have the parents of Remy Davis, if you all will please stand if you're here to be recognized. Oh, there we go. And Charles's parents, if you all are here, will you please stand or wave and be recognized? Thank you both for providing the pledge and statement this evening. And before we go, and I know you all are not done, but I wanted to recognize Dr. Wayne Williams, the Principal of Victory, and Ms. Eliza Fly, the Assistant Principal of Victory And before you sit, let me recognize, I know we have a lot of staff from Victory in here tonight, so if you all will please stand and be recognized, wave your hand. And Dr. Williams, this is the time, you go ahead and you can recognize.
I'd also like to recognize our parents. Would they please stand? And now our 2nd and 3rd grade course members have a special treat for you.
Looking up to heaven above, thinking of the ones we love. Blessings are both great and small, it's Thanksgiving time. Thanks for our country, people who care. Thanks for the freedom that we share. Past is my gift to all mankind, it's Thanksgiving time. Looking up to heaven above, thinking of the ones we love. Blessings are both great and small, it's Thanksgiving time. Thanks for our country, people who care. Thanks for the freedom that we share. Past is my gift to all mankind, it's Thanksgiving time. Thanks for our country, people who care. Thanks for the freedom that we share. Past is my gift to all mankind, it's Thanksgiving time. Stand up, let's take a good look in the mirror. Tell me who, who do you see? Keep your head up, reflect on who you are. If that's you, you, what has to be? Everything, your arm, your face, your ears, your eyes, your nose, your teeth. How perfect as can be. So sing, I'm brave, I'm strong, I'm loved, I'm smart, and I'm unique. And there's no one else in the whole wide world, whole wide world, exactly like me. Speak a little bit louder, the voice is waiting on your voice. Be true, true, it's what you have to say. You know it doesn't have work, but you can make the choice to do it your way. The world's a horse, you're a pro, and you really are a pro. See exactly who you are and proud to say. I'm brave, I'm strong, I'm loved, I'm smart, and I'm unique. And there's no one else in the whole wide world, whole wide world, exactly like me. I'm brave, I'm strong, I'm loved, I'm smart, and I'm unique. And there's no one else in the whole wide world, whole wide world, exactly like me. Whoa, 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 oh, oh, oh.
I'm brave, I'm strong, I'm smart. You're still singing in your head too, right? Whole wide world. Can we get another hand as they leave? Wow, this just made my day. And as they leave, I'd just like to read the mission statement of the School Board. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. We're going to have our attendance given by Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Dr. Carden?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Schumake?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.7 is consideration of the agenda for November 10th, 2022. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda items 5.1 and 5.2 is public comment. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 6.1 is one of my favorite moments in the evening, as our student representative report by Ms. Atkins.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Bracy, Chairman Dr. Patillo, and Vice Chair Atkinson, and the members of the Board. Next week, on Wednesday, November 16th, I will be attending the Virginia School Boards Association Conference in Williamsburg. I'm hoping I will learn more about presenting and just being a better leader in general. I can come back with some great information. I think you're presenting, there are you?
I'm doing a little something, Mom.
Yeah, I saw it in the, whatever they send out, the agenda, yes.
Looking forward to it.
So I'm really looking forward to that, and I hope to come back with some good information. And just the last thing, we are still following through that pipeline to College Assembly that I talked about last meeting. It's still going on, we're still doing sign-ups. So far, we have about 50 students signed up for it at Churchland, so it's a good turnout.
That's great.
We're looking for more student volunteers to help out with setup with that. And again, we're just touching on financial aid, FAFSA, what to expect your first year at college, just so you can get it firsthand and hear it from college students. So as I said, it's only in Churchland right now. We're pushing really hard to get into all three high schools because we would really like all the students to have an opportunity to be a part of that. But yeah, that's all I have, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions, Board members? Thank you so much. Agenda items 7.1 and 7.2 are consent agenda items. Now I entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schumake, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Carden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 8.1 is the monthly report for curriculum and instruction.
The information tonight is presented tonight. Dr. Winn is out, but in her stead, we have Mr. Dan Lewandowski from the Office of Science is going to share the curriculum report with us this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the Board, superintendents cabinet, and assembled audience. I am Daniel Lewandowski, Coordinator of Science, and Dr. Winn has requested I represent the Department of Curriculum Instruction in her absence this evening. You'll find the October highlights of the office's comprising Department of Curriculum Instruction online with your board documents. Additionally, I'm here to share with you this evening a highlight of one of our programs within the Office of Science. Back in 2017, Portsmouth Public Schools began a relationship with Jason Learning as its resource to curriculum and learning experiences in K-12 STEM education. Jason's award-winning curricula places students in challenging real-world situations where they are connected and mentored by leading STEM professionals. In addition to the comprehensive K-12 curricula, another unique component of our relationship with Jason Learning is our participation with their Argonaut program. In this program, teachers and students work directly with scientists, engineers, and other inspiring STEM role models, assisting them on field expeditions and joining them in their labs. This evening, I have the pleasure to introduce to you two of our amazing high school students who participated in the STEM Argonaut expeditions this past September, along with one of their teachers. This past September, we had, let me see, the McTendon Expedition in Boston. Their journey began last school year as they worked together in developing an understanding of the processes of design thinking, innovation, and entrepreneurship. They are here this evening to share their experiences with you. As I call their names, I ask that they come forward to the podium so they may share their presentation with you. Additionally, I ask that the parents of the students please stand so that the Board may recognize you. Ms. Amanda Bell is an 8th grade science teacher at Churchland Middle School and is also a national trainer with Jason Learning. She accompanied the Argonauts to Boston with her colleague, Mr. Sarandier, from Manor High School. Mr. Sarandier is presenting this evening at the Virginia Association of Science Teachers. Our first student Argonaut I'd love for you to meet is Ms. Moira Rulo, a freshman attending Churchland High School and the Governor's School for the Arts. Ms. Rulo would like to move her studies forward to becoming a lawyer and an author. She is accompanied here this evening with her mother, Mrs. Julie Fadden. Thank you. Our second student Argonaut is Mr. Elijah Williams, a senior attending Manor High School. Elijah is the battalion commander for the Manor High School's AJROTC program and the volleyball captain for the Mustangs. Mr. Williams is applying for entrance to the United States Military Academies and hopes one day to achieve a career as a medical professional. He is accompanied here this evening with his mother, Mrs. Tamara Williams. Elijah?
Moira? Once again, my name is Elijah Williams.
And I'm Moira Rulo.
And we are your Jason Argonauts for the years 2021 to 2022. Before you is the roster for the individuals who contributed to the journey of learning and truly embody the diversity Jason Argonauts hopes to achieve. Through our experience with our fellow Argonauts, we were able to grow and learn in our culminating activity in Boston, one of the nation's leading centers of technology design and innovation. There we saw, oh, there you go. There we saw professionals in the STEM field utilize concepts that we were able to learn during our time in virtual learning, such as design thinking process. And the design thinking process is to empathize, to define, to ideate, to create prototypes, and to create, test those prototypes. Along with our learning experience, we were also able to present our projects to our colleges, the colleges we visited, as well as the companies we visited, and they gave us constructive criticism along with that journey. The first company they were able to meet with was IDEO, and the leading man who came to us and spoke with us was Zachary Hobbs. And to give you a snapshot of IDEO, IDEO is a design and consulting firm that got us accreditation from its unique way of approaching problems with unique solutions. So does anybody have a mouse right now? Do you have a mouse? Everybody have a mouse? IDEO created that. IDEO created the current mouse you have right now.
So during our time at IDEO, we were able to take a tour of the building and learn what IDEO stands for and what their company sets out to do, and they taught us a very important lesson: Just keep creating. It doesn't matter what it is, it doesn't have to be perfect. You should create just to create. And as an artist, I think that really resonated with me. So as a perfectionist, I think that really taught me an important lesson, as well as my fellow Argonauts. So we learned from Zachary Hobbs, like the journey that he took getting from like where he was, where like we are now, to how he got a position at IDEO. So that was very helpful to us.
And might I add, the way we learned was rather unorthodox. It was something that was unique and interesting to learn. It was something that we didn't expect to know in terms of just creativity and the way they interacted with each other. It was just something entirely new, something that Jason Argonauts brought to us. The second company they were able to interact with was the LightMatter, LightMatter Company, and they specialize in photonic processors. So any future commuters that you're working with, this will help you speed up the process, create a better and stronger computer for your future.
And to mention, LightMatter is a startup company. So we got to experience like what it takes to build a company from the ground up based upon one idea, and how a bunch of people sharing the same values can come together and really expand upon an idea and improve it and make it better. And that really helped us in the Argonaut expedition because we learned that we don't have to have some like multimillion-dollar company backing us. We can really start it ourselves from the ground up.
Along with that, as you see in one of the pictures above, we were able to speak with their human resources officer, and she was able to give us a motivating speech about waking up every day and having purpose behind what you do, really having strength behind each and every step that you take. And we really took that and took it with us, especially coming back to Portsmouth, and having more purpose in what we do. She spoke to the individual and the nerds, and they were among us.
The next place that we visited was MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, and there we learned helpful tips and insight on what it would look like, the admissions process to get into MIT for those of us interested. There were a lot of us. And we got to meet with a former Jason Argonaut who is currently enrolled in MIT, and she offered us helpful insight on how to get to where she is now from where we are now. And at MIT, we learned more about the design process and technological advances that they are making, and we had a little bit of a competition pictured in that lovely picture there. We had to build a balloon structure, and the most stable one would win. And unfortunately, we did not fare so well, but we tried, and that's all that matters.
In addition to that, we gave an elevator pitch there. So before we actually went to the next college, or excuse me, the company that you'll see eventually, we gave an elevator pitch to the people who came in to help us, and they gave us constructive criticism or ideas, and there's different ways we can approach our design thinking.
The next college that we visited was Harvard, and unfortunately, we did not get to proceed with our initial plan to tour the Astrophysics Building, but we did get to, due to some help from teacher Argonauts who have connections, we got to enter the Astrophysics Library and speak with current Harvard grad students who told us about like the, how grad school works, and explained to us astrophysics. I don't get it, but they did a very good job, and I think that it was very interesting to hear that kind of perspective, to see like different aspects of STEM that we weren't necessarily focusing on. So that was interesting.
Along with our journey to the Astrophysics Library, we also went to their virtual learning laboratory with Russ Grant, and that was an incredible experience. So basically-
a working space for innovators and engineers and provide them with the materials needed and to, sorry, to interact and build their ideas. And at Autodesk, this was where we gave our final pitches in front of representatives from Wentworth Institute of Technology and a business and engineering firm there that I believe was called Manfredi, but I don't remember. Okay, thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. Is there any further questions?
I want to say that when you leave Portsmouth Public Schools and you go and get these degrees and get these great jobs, I want you to use that intellectual thinking you were talking about and come back and fix our microphones, because they're horrible.
Sir.
They're horrible. But thank you all, I feel honored to be in your presence. I see we have two geniuses in front of us. Geniuses are described as exceptional intellectuals or creative powers, and I see a lot of intellect and creativity in front of me. You all are going to do some great things, there are no limits for you, and I'm just honored that you all can go somewhere one day and say that you come from Portsmouth. And thank you for being in front of us on this evening. Board members?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas, then we'll go on down the line.
I just had to say, kudos, awesome job. First, on your presentation, you both just stood up here and gave a, I want to say, above college level, a business-level presentation on your experience, and just some of what you described that you went through with this opportunity, kudos to the Science Department. I hope we can continue this experience and this expedition for future students. I mean, I'm an engineer too, and what you all just presented there is just mind-blowing, what you said you learned about the design process, what you said you learned about the creative process, and I think it's awesome that you're an artist and you're engineer-minded, and that it comes all, that you saw the whole process, how it comes together, because it's not just STEM, it's STEAM and art too, and I just think that's amazing, what you presented. And you all highlighted one of my favorite books, Emotional Intelligence 2.0, and I just think that's a great book for future leaders, future creators. Just keep doing it, I'm so proud of you both, awesome job.
Well, I think, board member Yolanda covered part of everything I was going to say, but I'll still say the same. So, fun fact, Mr. Lewandowski was my science teacher, so that's a fun fact. But just overall, great job. I can see the Steve Jobs influence in the program, because when I watched the movie, that's all he would say is, "Keep creating, keep creating." So, really, take that advice, that was the drive behind his success. Everyone didn't accept everything that he did, but that didn't stop him. So, take that to heed in your future careers, and when you feel like stopping or when you feel like you're going to break, just keep creating, because one day, you know, someone will see the possibility, will see the dream, will see the vision. So, I'm just proud, seeing students like yourself give me the confidence that we are doing something right in Portsmouth, and it makes us proud, so thank you so much for that.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on what both board member Thomas and Atkinson said. I remember sitting in the room in 2017 when it was Ms. Nelson at the time and Dr. Bracy, one of his first presentations that he brought us was this program, you know? And so, you talk about the process, and you talk about the dream, and you talk about keep going. I just want to say thank you for bringing it and keeping it going, because what we're going to get out of it is worth every bit of hard work and every bit of aggravation that you may have with your teammates or with your teachers, you know? It all comes with the process, and that experience is not something that we can give you in a classroom, unfortunately, we can prepare you for that. And so, to have teachers that have the vision and the dream to prepare you for that, for you to be able to go and to speak intelligently and to absorb and to put it into your everyday practices and let it become a part of you, and then you take that to other people and give that to other people, that is a part of that process as well. So, I want to thank you for representing Portsmouth the way that you did, I want to thank you for representing Portsmouth the way that you are, and for representing yourselves the way that you guys did tonight, because you guys did an awesome job. And to go to Boston in September, the weather isn't that pleasant, but you guys had jeans and sweatshirts, and y'all were going to make it work, and I have no doubt that you're going to make it work as well. And so, Mr. Lewandowski standing behind you, I want to call him Coach Lou, because not only was he my teacher, he was my soccer coach as well, and, you know, he had the dream and the vision to put the shortest person that ever played soccer at Manor High School in a goalkeeper position. So, you know, it is what it is. But Mr. Lewandowski, thank you so much for pushing it and making it come true, because I know even when I was with you, just 10 years ago, when I was with you, you know, you had this mission and this vision for us even then, and so, to make it come alive and to keep it moving, I want to thank you guys as well. So, board, thank you for making sure that we continue to do this as well. So, thank you so much for being here. The teachers that helped you guys get there, oh my gosh, I can only imagine, that's a work of passion, that's not a work of, yeah, I would say love, but passion includes some, you know, inspirational tidbits there as well. So, thank you for what you do as well. Thank you, guys.
And for the record, the keyboard player, I taught him too. So, you've seen from kindergarten to high school this evening, and that concludes the curriculum instruction report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure, Ms. Bell, do you have anything you want to say?
It was an honor to get to represent our district and to really showcase that unfortunately we end up getting publicized for the not-so-great, and this is something that Dr. Bracy started our partnership, and Dr. Patillo, you and Dr. Bracy both have been very influential with our relationship with Jason and getting to have this experience and to see our students go from kind of shy students to presenting in front of MIT professors and teams and taking their constructive criticism and literally in less than 24 hours completely changing their presentations to present to Elvis Manfredi, the largest architecture firm in Boston, with all the confidence in the world, is why I do what I do every day. So, thank you all for encouraging us and providing us with these opportunities. And Ms. Thomas, to your point, yes, this is something that is available to all of our Portsmouth Public Schools students every year, as well as our teachers, so this is definitely something that is not the last of our abilities for our student population.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that Dr. Bracy and myself, we are actually working with Jason now to try to expand the program to include more with environmental studies, so we're excited with the opportunities coming for our students, and we're true believers in Jason and the program. But thank you for giving your time and dedication to our students. It's often overlooked after you teach your classes all day long, you know, you still make time to do that, and we are truly appreciative to you for all that you do for our kids. Thank you.
And Mr. Lewandowski, thank you for representing Dr. Patillo and myself, you and Dr. Peace. Earlier this week, you were in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, with the partnership that LSU has with East Baton Rouge School, as Dr. Patillo just mentioned, with environmental studies. We're interested in learning more, we're part of the grant to see if we can bring that back. I hate we couldn't attend, but I knew you and Dr. Peace did your thing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I look forward to debriefing with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Agenda item 8.2 is our employee groups' budget and salary requests for 2023-24, and that's going to be... Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll start with the first group, who wants, who's ready to come up and present at this time.
I have a list.
You have a list, okay. I'm sorry, I don't have the list.
It's a board doc.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Gordon Jones.
As you can see, I'm not Gordon Jones. Vice Chair, Atkins. Dr. Bracy. Members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Laura Hamilton, the Vice President of Portsmouth Education Association and a proud second-grade teacher at Brighton Elementary School. This evening, I would like to present the Portsmouth Education Association 2023-2024 On behalf of the Board of Directors and 550-plus members of the Portsmouth Education Association, we would like to thank you, Dr. Bracy, and members of the school board, for including us in the discussion of the upcoming 2023-2024 school year budget. We know you are aware that there are staff shortages in this post-pandemic era. However, due to your ingenious planning and the sign-on bonus offered to new teachers, our district was able to moderately close that gap. Kudos to Dr. Bracy and the school board for making this happen. I'm sure you are aware, our teachers are spending countless hours creatively planning and implementing the video E standards of learning to ensure our students are receiving the best education, are shining brightly together here in our district. Now that we are back to some form of normalcy, our schools are still burdened with staff shortages, overcrowded classrooms, and no substitutes. And yet, our dedicated staff continues to provide a safe and loving environment where our students can thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. We roll up our sleeves and get the job done. Although the district is still facing trying times, there are still some issues that we, as a staff, face daily, such as inflation, rising gas and food prices. Many of our staff members either have two or more jobs or living paycheck to paycheck, and we need your help. Portsmouth Public School employees have not seen an increase in step-based pay in quite a few years. If this is not rectified, we may see more staff leave the district, and our students cannot afford this. So, are you asking yourself, is there a solution? Yes, there is. We are recommending a 5%, I'm sorry, 6% total pay increase for all staff across the district. We feel this is only fair and equitable to meet the absence of a cost of living and step-based increases, along with rising insurance premiums. As in previous presentations, we are still recommending an educational incentive program that includes grants and/or scholarships for paraprofessionals and other education support personnel. Many other paraprofessionals and other ESPs are currently providing extraordinary services just like our certified teachers. This would inspire them to further pursue their educational goals as certified teachers and assist the district in developing a recruitment and employment pipeline. Finally, we urge conversations about building a new elementary middle school for the 21st century with all the necessary technical features, as well as a 21st-century vocational and career center for our high school students. In order to assist lowering the crime rate among the city's youth and train them to be good citizens, these facilities would be a terrific investment for both our students and the community. Our members, staff, and students appreciate the opportunity to express our concerns and make recommendations to you. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with you, because we are excited to see these ideas and others put into action in order to make Portsmouth Public Schools the best place for teaching and learning. If there are any PEA members here tonight, please stand, and if there is any other staff that would like to stand with us, please stand. Portsmouth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and if you could do me a favor, you could email your report to the clerk so we could all have a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was taking notes, okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I was taking notes.
Mrs. Lisa Roundtree?
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Chairman, sorry, Chairman Patillo, Chairman, co-Vice Chairman, I'm nervous, forgive me, Vice Chairman Atkinson and Dr. Bracy. My name is Lisa Roundtree, I'm the nurse team leader for Portsmouth Public Schools, and I'm here representing the Health Services Department and the actions of Samantha Womack, our Health Services Supervisor. This is my first time here, y'all forgive me. Just wanted to say that I'm asking for some, for budget considerations for the following. We have school, physician, and equipment maintenance costs, we have AEDs in all of our buildings, and we weren't aware that Health Services was responsible for servicing them and maintaining them, so we're asking for additional costs to absorb that, I mean, funds to absorb that cost. The following categories are also being considered, there's no major changes in what our current year's budget has for them, but for travel, staff development, office supplies, the food supplies, medical supplies, uniforms, replacement equipment, and to maintain our software system for our EMR systems, which is the electronic medical record system that we use. During the summer, this past summer, we did a nurse summer chart review, and we included some hours, it was a pilot program, that worked out pretty well, in trying to make sure that we are meeting the state requirements for registration for kindergartners, to review records. Sometimes it's kind of hard to kind of get your clinic together and to review records so that we can, in a timely manner, execute exclusions or to get information from parents that would otherwise get them excluded from school later, you know? We had kind of an extension this year, and still we have some issues with getting in physicals and shock records and things for our kindergarten registration. So, those review hours really kind of helped that process though, because in past years it's been much worse. I believe it was grant-funded this year, but just kind of looking at including that in our upcoming budget for the next year. Other additional critical staffing needs include a senior nurse team leader position and an additional nurse team leader. We still have shortages in our schools, we have some temporary nurses in place, but with them, they're through Maxim, I think it's five schools, and then we have, also, I'm looking at a position for a medical sped liaison. There's, when we process sped requests or special education services, shall I say, we're looking at, you know, we have three members in our office, and all of us are deeply involved in trying to fulfill those sped requests. I'm just thinking about the, some of the disparities or some of the acuity that we have with our students and their learning, you know, and disabilities and things like that. Also, clinic assistance, requesting either CNAs or MedTechs in our clinics, which will come, because of some of the... and an additional nurse team leader. We still have shortages in our schools. We have some temporary nurses in place, but with them, they're through Maxim, I think it's five schools. And then we have, also, I'm looking at a position for a medical sped liaison. There's, when we process sped requests or special education services, shall I say, we're looking at, you know, we have three members in our office, and all of us are deeply involved in trying to fulfill those sped requests. I'm just thinking about the, some of the disparities or some of the acuity that we have with our students and their learning, you know, and disabilities and things like that. Also, clinic assistance, requesting either CNAs or med techs in our clinics, which will come, because of some of the school teachers and staffing shortages, you know, we normally have medical design needs. Sometimes it's difficult to get those medical design needs in place when nurses are out or not available, and as we know, we don't have enough nurses. So considering CNAs or med techs to assist in the clinics, especially the schools that have higher population. You know, according to NASN, the school, the nurse-to-student ratio in schools with no problems, no students with any medical needs or everyday, like asthma, diabetes, or any other complex issues, would be 1 to 750 students. But in schools that have those issues, it's 1 to 225. And we have 11 schools that would exceed having the need for one nurse by herself. It's just a whole lot. So that would kind of increase our need for a greater budget, and I think that, if there was a PowerPoint, I thought, well, not a PowerPoint, but a form that she sent to you guys, that, okay, so you have that information. And that's it, I'm kind of nervous.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Like our chair said, great job. I just have a question regarding the EpiPens and the inhalers. Are we nearing the expiration for the ones previously purchased?
They're not completely out of, we just got some last year, last school year, so they usually last a year or two, up to 18 months probably. But sometimes they will extend them, and sometimes they won't, you know, so it depends on the manufacturer. And preferably, we can try to get the ones that are generic. They're a little bit more cost-efficient, but yeah, we gotta, once they expire, we can't use them unless it's recommended by the manufacturer that we extend the expiration because of a shortage or sort. But if they don't have a shortage, then they're not going to extend the.
Do you know if we're using the Pfizer brand or the generic brand?
The name brand.
Okay, so the Pfizer brand, okay. And the same with the inhalers, we're nearing the expiration on those as well?
We just implemented that last, the last school year.
Okay.
So those are still good for now.
Gotcha.
And they use the last almost two years too.
Gotcha. But we can always use extra, definitely understand that.
Yes, because we've actually had to use them, you know, like I said, trying to get parents to provide.
Right.
And sometimes you do have children who have not been diagnosed, or, you know, they come up on issues, and so using it in emergency situations have, have been pretty frequent recently.
I definitely understand that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Shanetta Hicks.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Patillo, school board members, senior staff, and everyone in attendance. My name is Shanetta Hicks. I'm a head custodian at Victory Elementary School. As I stand before you, I ask that you listen from your heart while I present the 2023 to 2024 budget request from the custodial staff. Custodians work behind the scenes. Before the bus drivers pick up the students and drop them off at school, before the teachers and staff report to school to begin the process of educating our students, and before the nurses provide treatment to students, the custodians have worked hard the night before to clean, disinfect, and check the buildings to make sure they're ready to receive students, faculty, staff, and the general public. A recent salary comparison shows surrounding school districts, custodian staff are being compensated more than our custodial staff is being compensated for performing the same duties and responsibilities. The average starting wage range for other cities is $12.05 to $17.68, depending on the city per hour, which I have attached. When the 3% to 5% is given, we are nowhere near the amount of their starting pay. In order to retain our custodial department, we must be compensated monetarily to keep us shining brightly. I propose, I propose a step increase, not only to help keep our caring employees, but also to compete with the surrounding cities in recruiting new employees. If a step increase is not implemented, we will again risk losing numerous employees to cities and companies. There are many occasions where we are physically challenged due to staff shortages, but we ensure that we provide a clean, safe teaching and learning environment. This has continuously been the case since the COVID era. We currently have 106 custodian positions, of which only 84 positions are filled. This does not include access. There are days when we are at minimal staffing and only have two custodians per location. Every day, every day, we clean approximately 2 million-plus square feet of space in our facilities, which have also attached. We are the key to providing a clean, safe, healthy working environment for our students and staff. Yes, we are the key, as the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King once told us. The time is right to do what is right. In conclusion, we come in love, and the love that we have for Portsmouth Public Schools, we thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and we thank you for your consideration. And I ask, not meaning I ask, and all my custodial staff, we thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hicks. But before we pass the collection plate, does anybody else have anything else to add? But no, but thank you so much for coming. I personally do know that the hard work and detail you all put into your jobs every single day, and when everyone's enjoying their summer vacations, you all are still there cleaning the buildings, getting them right for us coming back to school. We really appreciate that. But if no one has anything else to say, we definitely are going to take this to heart and try to go to work for you all during this budget season.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'll never work. In case y'all want, a lot of them got to go to work now, so. I'm really thankful they came down here tonight.
Mr. Don Cuffy.
Y'all could have let me go before.
Oh, no, we already know what you can do, Ms. Cuffy. We already know.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkins, board members. My name is Don Cuffy, and I'm here representing the Operations Service Maintenance Staff. I appreciate your time and consideration for the items I will be presenting this evening. This evening, I would like to talk about why restoring step increases and providing funds for salary increases is justified. Right now, hiring Portsmouth Public Schools trade positions is very difficult. At current salary levels, it's taking over a year to find qualified personnel to hire as plumbers, electricians, electronics technicians, carpenters, masons, painters, and in certain cases, trade positions are taking even longer to fill. An example of this is Operations Building Services was without a plumber for two years before having to hire a member from within the building maintenance staff to fill the position. This is also a good justification for why an apprenticeship program should be stood up. Currently, there are six vacancies out of 26 positions in Operations Building Services that need to be filled. With just 20 trade workers, Building Services is supporting and maintaining 26 work and building locations for Portsmouth Public Schools. This includes plumbing, roofing, electrical, supply and equipment delivery, carpentry, renovations, masonry, furniture moving, alarm systems, audiovisual systems, electronics, lighting, and grounds maintenance, to name just some of the work we perform. Portsmouth Public Schools will not be able to recruit, maintain, or retain skilled trade workers if higher salaries are not paid to Operational Building, Operations Building Services trade workers. Current Portsmouth Public Schools salary levels, trade workers have not kept up with other local public schools or local area trades salaries. A substantial salary increase is needed to retain and hire new trade workers. An example of this is the median salary for, and I'm an electrician, so I picked this one specifically. The median salary for a Portsmouth Public School journeyman electrician is $46,800. This amount would be more compatible with other school systems if step increases were provided annually. But since they are not, our electrician salaries remains at the first step of that table for their entire tenure as an electrician. So from day one to 30 years to retirement, I'm still on step one. This is the case even though the 2022-2023 Paying Classification Plan has a salary range from $46,800 to $71,000. But our electricians never advance to the higher steps. The median salary for a Virginia Beach Public School electrician is $55,600. Their steps range from $44,300 to $77,800. This is in enclosure two. They get to scale up as time goes on, whereas Portsmouth doesn't. Again, these are median salaries. The median salary for a Norfolk Public School electrician is $57,000. Their range is from $45,000 to $78,900. This is in your enclosure three. The median salary for a journeyman electrician in the Tidewater area is $61,000, which is in enclosure four, and you can see that's a bell. That's just the middle, so there are some who make even more than that $61,000. Providing a significant raise to Portsmouth Public School employees has been done before. In 2022, Portsmouth Public Schools provided a 21% salary increase for the school bus drivers and nurses. It is only fair that a similar salary increase is provided to our Operations Building Services Maintenance Staff. An increase in pay will provide relief from the year's 9.7 inflation rate and keep us competitive in salaries in the Hampton Roads area, and reward our dedicated hard-working Building Services Maintenance Staff for their excellence, their commitment to the Portsmouth Public Schools. In 2003, Portsmouth Public Schools approved a one-time step increase and an annual cost of living increase for the Operations Building Maintenance Staff. Since that time, no performance or tenure salary increases have been given. Salary gaps between Operational Building Maintenance Trade salaries and the surrounding areas will continue to increase if Portsmouth Public Schools continues to deny step increases to our building maintenance personnel. At the same time, other local trades and public school systems will continue to provide both annual step increases and cost of living increases for their trade workers, worsening the salary gap. Restoring step pay increases or providing substantial salary increases will help reduce the pay gap between Portsmouth Public School trade salaries and trade salaries in the Hampton Roads area. Please consider funding one of these salary increases for the 2023 budget. Thank you for your time. At this time, I'd also like to acknowledge the Operations Building Service Maintenance Staff. Would you please stand? In addition, I'd like to acknowledge all of those from the Operations Building Staff Department. That's all custodians as well as main workers. Would you please stand? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuffy. Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. Just in my thinking, as you were talking about apprenticeships, my question, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but as we start looking, is there a way that we could use any of our students who are interested in plumbing, electrical, masonry, carpentry? How do we put apprenticeships for our students with you to work through that continuing pipeline? Because at some point, we are going to have a turnover of staff for age and for retirement, not, you know. I'm 10 years out, I get it. I'm beginning to look at who's going to come in after me the same way that everybody else is. But for our students, how can we look at getting, because when I was in school and I graduated in 96, we had these things called COOPS, where we had kids that would go out and they would work. You know, they came to school for like two classes a day, and then they went out and worked, and we got grades for those jobs, you know, for the work that we did. So how can we get our students involved in that if that is something that they want to do? How old do they have to be? And so I'm just brainstorming at this point. How can we get our students involved in apprenticeships where they can learn trades and skills? And whether they choose to stay here or not, they have a viable source of an income or a trade for them. And so as we go through this budget project, process, and as we talk about opportunities for our students, I think looking at apprenticeships within our own division to, for our sustainability should be something that we need to look at.
Yeah, and that's something that we are working on now with Mr. Hill. We approved during this past summer, when I retreat, a plan to bring plumbing and electrical and automotive mechanic HVAC back in-house as it used to be in Portsmouth Public Schools. So by doing that, more students will have more opportunities to have career placement in fields like electrical and plumbing. So by bringing those things back in-house, we can somehow create those opportunities for our students as COOPS. So we are trying to do that as we speak, and we should get a report sometime soon on the progress of the facilities as well. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Jody Huff-Stickler.
One second, please. Mr. Dean's going to hook me up with the PowerPoint.
Oh, you come in tough tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not as tough as Ms. Hicks, though. Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Ms. Adkinson, Dr. Bracy, and the rest of the school board team. It's great to be here. My name is Jody Huff-Stickler, and I am the Food Service Manager at Simondsdale Elementary I would like to start off by thanking each of you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the entire food service team. I would like everyone who came to represent the food service team to please stand. I wanted you to see their faces first, because these are the people who have been tirelessly working in our kitchens over the unknown times of COVID, the stressful food shortages, and the exhausting staff shortages. Many of these faces have been working with PPS for 20-plus years, and some just started. But we are all passionate about our craft and our students. Oh, they already sat down. Thank you. You may be seated. Sorry, I can't see what's behind me. Our cafeterias have been short-staffed for a while at this point. We have managed to continue feeding our students quality food without having quantity issues. Because of this, at times, the fact that food services short-staffed goes unnoticed. However, every employee is feeling the mental and physical strain of having their role expanded to include half of the duties of a former employee and half of the responsibilities of a position that we're waiting to hire, which sometimes takes over a month to get somebody onboard. I want to talk about our roles, accomplishments, and impact as food service employees. When we feed our students a healthy breakfast and lunch, it improves academic performance by increasing our test scores, it improves concentration and focus, lifts moods, aids in weight management, it boosts our immune system, which we all know right now is pretty important, and allows our students to develop mentally and physically. A study at the University of California, Berkeley, shows that students that have a healthy breakfast and lunch score higher on statewide achievement tests, and we all know how important this is as well. The food service team has a tremendous impact on our students. We have the first and lasting impression on our students. We are one of the only school employees that engage with the majority of our students. We set the mood for the day by greeting, and we emphasize the importance of treating everyone with dignity and respect. Our food service department is a vital part of our school's culture and success. We have been essential workers during a pandemic, and we work during storms and state emergencies. So we're going to talk a little bit about our accomplishments this past year. We have increased our participation in breakfast and lunch. Prior to COVID, we were bringing in positive revenue, and we plan on continuing the trend now that we are back to full service. Schools in Portsmouth have been recognized as leaders of increased breakfast numbers throughout the entire state. I know my school was actually one of them a few years ago, right when COVID hit. Our menu has changed to include more items our children want to eat that are nutritious and delicious. You may have heard, we got Domino's Pizza, so the kids are excited about that. We were the only employees that immediately started working the Monday after COVID and continued working during all of the unknowns. We discussed many issues that the food service department has with Mr. Falk, and after speaking with him, we took several of our concerns off the table that we can actually fix interdepartmentally or issues that we know are just not feasible at this time. However, we did push the item of competitive and fair pay. Last year, the focus was bus drivers and nurses. This year, in order to continue providing the quality service that our food service department provides, our focus has to be food service. We have to increase the gap between our new hires and our veteran employees. With minimum wage, our new hires are quickly gaining on our 20-plus-year employees, who deserve to be making over $2 more than a new hire. I'm going to repeat that, $2 more for 20-plus years than a new hire. We have to rise from the bottom of the pay scale for our food service department and strive to be at the top. Other cities in our area start their food service employees off at $15. PPS is the lowest starting rate in the Hampton Roads area. But with this goes making sure we remember the employees who have that tenure in our school system and paying them for their time and dedication. Something Mr. Cuffee actually talked about, and Ms. Hicks, a 5% increase when you're only making $11.55 is only 58 cents. So when we think about the cost of gas and the cost of food that has gone up, it really doesn't equate to fair. So this is my motto, "The time is now." Last year, the "no" was a really "not right now" in my book from you guys. But the time is now before we lose more quality employees to other districts or jobs in the area, which in return mainly affects two groups: our students, their success now in the school system, and their future as adults, building our community and the culture of the city of Portsmouth. It also affects our current employees, affecting their morale, our work-life balance, and our mental and physical health. I encourage you to watch the TED Talk video that I attached to my PowerPoint titled "Why Lunch Ladies Are Superheroes." And I urge each of you to swing by the cafe when you're in a school. I know you guys come by, swing by. I guarantee that you're going to find dedicated employees who are probably jumping from position to position, filling in where we can, scooping mashed potatoes as fast as we can, making sure the plate looks appetizing also. We're double-checking that the students have the right components on their tray to ensure that we are following the federal government to receive the meal reimbursement, then running back to the back to make sure that the breakfast for tomorrow is prepped, counted, and bagged so we're set up for the next day. You might even find someone pulling some hot and fresh crispy fries right out the oven before they go into the dish room, because the dishes are almost overflowing onto the floor, but then remembering, oh goodness, I have to get out to the cafeteria and make sure the tables are wiped and sanitized before the next class to prevent the spread of germs. You will definitely find a manager running multiple positions, from prepping to serving to cooking dishwasher and registers. They will be walking the cafeteria floor to say hi to the students, because guess what? Their favorite person is the lunch lady. That manager and employees will be tired from coming in at 5:00 a.m. to make sure food is prepped and ready for our first students to arrive. But you know what? They will smile, they have pride in their food, and they have a love for our students and our staff that you don't find everywhere. With all of this being said, it is time that our focus is put on our food service employees that are essential to our student and staff's success. I'm going to pull Ms. Hicks. We need to pay them competitively and deservingly. Food service recognition time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll never argue the importance of a good meal. Vice Chair Atkins.
Thank you, and a great presentation. And I agree, the time is now for food services, and lunch ladies are really superheroes. So that was an amazing TED Talk. I actually watched it before it came on my feet. While the food services employees are here, I just want to shout out one of your employees, Summer. She works at Craddock Middle School. Hey, Summer. You know, when she posts pictures of the food, it just shows that food services go above and beyond, and each time she posts, people are shocked, because they're like, is that food from Portsmouth Public Schools? You know, because lunch is scrutinized, and we have went viral before for a bad, you know, lunch that came out. So like, Summer is really like changing the narrative and the imagery of our food and making it look appetizing, and when that is done, our kids are more likely to eat food, and that's give us confidence that they're able to learn throughout the day because they're not starving. So thank you, food services team, and each of you who came out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see, we celebrated someone in our early session. She, today was her 42nd year. Oh, Ms. Lily, I thought she left. Okay, she is, okay. Forty, 42 years today. And Ms. Lily feeds me good before a board meeting, I'm telling you that now. But thank you all again for coming, and for many of us who had a green ticket for lunch growing up, you all really made our day special, and you did extra things for us that, you know, many others wouldn't do. So we thank you all for your sacrifices you make for our children every single day, and we'll do our best to fight for you during this budget season as well. Thank you all so much. And agenda item 9.1 is Dr. Bracy's abbreviated superintendent's monthly report. I said abbreviated, not animated.
It's abbreviated. We have a lot of you all, I know, that are trying to get to the playoff games at Norcom and Churchland. Norcom just, Churchland just went into halftime, Norcom's probably on their way out, so I'm going to abbreviate this, my comments, just first of all, just to say, thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing the information regarding their respective positions and asking for the increase in their pay. I would like to just quickly thank our administrators and auxiliary services teams for the wonderful job they did in our buildings, getting them ready for the election this past Tuesday. They did an excellent job in having everything set up and then breaking them down and having everything in place for school to open the following day. Do you want to mention that November is Military Family Appreciation Month, and we're celebrating it in a great way. We're partnering with the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, USO, and the Food Bank of Southeast Virginia and Eastern Shore to host the Military Family Steam Event. It will be Wednesday, November 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Emily's Bong. Our military families can take part in interactive steam stations and also leave with fresh produce and information on family resources. If you want more information, please contact PPS Parent Family Engagement Specialist Loretta Stills at 757-393-8392. I'm sure I don't have to mention this, but I'll just briefly say, of course, we're just two weeks away from Thanksgiving, and all of our schools and administrative offices will be closed Wednesday, November 23rd through Friday, November 25th. Wednesday, November 23rd, is an asynchronous learning day for students and a telework day for staff members. So Ms. Hines, I won't be hearing from you to give me a call to ask me, you know, what's occurring. All right. You're welcome. We took care of it. We took care of it. Thursday and Friday will be completely closed for the Thanksgiving holiday, and I hope everyone with our staff, students, as well as all of our PPS families enjoy that time away. Finally, you know, we're closed tomorrow, all administrative offices and schools in observance of Veterans Day. I want to thank, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our military personnel for their dedicated service. We appreciate the work you've done for our country, and I hope you feel the gratitude from all of us as we honor you tomorrow. Chairman Patillo, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, sir. And I want to take the opportunity also to acknowledge our city attorney who's here with us tonight, Mr. Vonda Graham-Williams. Thank you. Thank you for coming. And also, I want to acknowledge our future school board member, Ms. Cornelia Futrell, if she's standing back. Do we have any, Vice Chair?
All right. Thank you, Chair. So each board member has a copy of the holiday small business directory. These businesses come from our MWBE business directory, and we just sent an email and asked some of our businesses that they want to be featured. So these aren't, so don't think that these are all the businesses in Portsmouth, these are the ones from our directory and those that chose to participate. So if you can, stop by the Portsmouth businesses and support those businesses as well from the list. Also, I just want to wish Norcom and Churchland the best of luck. I know Churchland is going to take it, I think the score with Churchland is about 38-7 right now, so hopefully Norcom can bring it home. So best wishes.
Thank you so much. Dr. Cott.
I couldn't let this time go by without publicly congratulating you as stepping in as president-elect of Virginia School Board Association. So congratulations, and I know you're upset this year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Well, if we don't have any other comments, if all minds and hearts are clear, I now consider this meeting is...
Yes.
So moved.
Second.